I now call this meeting of the Bryan Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:03 PM. And apologies for the brief delay in getting started. We are recording the first part of this meeting so that we can post it when the livestream is then active. So we want to extend a warm welcome to everyone. Thanks for being here today. If you've not already done so, please turn off the sound on all electronic devices. And we will be hearing our pledges through a video, a YouTube video. These will come from Tiffany Hurst's summer school class at Henderson Elementary. And so we're going to run these back to back. So we will first start with the American flag. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. That's one thing about the summer. We miss seeing our children in person, but we're very grateful that they were able to record that for us. So thank you to whoever did that. All right, we'll move straight into our spotlights this evening. And first, we're going to start with our auxiliary employee of the month. We welcome Ron Clary from our... Ron, apologies, I've forgotten your title and it's not on my sheet.
Auxiliary services.
He's got a lot of titles. We're glad you're here, Ron.
Well, thank you.
And we are going to recognize Clifford Benford from our custodial services.
And I apologize, I think we've had a miscommunication about the time for tonight. So I do want to give Mr. Benford the honor and would like to bring it back to the August board meeting to recognize him and give him his due.
Okay, perfect.
I apologize.
No, we can postpone that?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, but we have another one, so exciting. We have an Essential Eight Community Award. We're going to welcome Dr. Hugo Ibarra, our Director of Community Affairs, to recognize La Voz.
Hola. Hi, everyone. My name is Hugo Ibarra. I'm the Director of Community Affairs. Tonight, we are proud to recognize La Voz Aguilan as one of Bryan ISD's Essential Eight Community Awards winner. La Voz is a newspaper that has been in existence for over 29 years. It was actually their anniversary last week. And they are one of the largest media outlets in Bryan College Station. La Voz has gone above and beyond to support Bryan ISD. And as you know, we, family and community engagement, have been a priority in our district. And La Voz has played a pivotal role, particularly with Spanish-speaking families. So tonight, we have Adriana Alfaro representing, again, La Voz Hispana or La Voz Aguilan. And we are very honored to award you with the Essential Eight Community Award.
Yay!
Thank you so much. Adriana and her husband Giovanni Ramirez are also Bryan ISD parents. And she would like to share some of her thoughts as a parent.
Hi, hola, buenas tardes. Hi. Okay, so as media, we really appreciate that you guys see what all we are involved in education, not just for the kids, but for the parents, for you as staff, teachers, everyone. We are really, really, really grateful about Bryan ISD's hard work during all these years because you guys are amazing. And the least we can do is support you, support the kids, the families, the community. And we really, really appreciate you all guys. And as a mom, it's going to be in Spanish, sorry. He visto los cambios que han habido durante todos estos años.
As a mom, I've seen all the changes that the district has implemented over the course of several years.
Mi hija más pequeña is a junior in Bryan High NIB program.
Oh, her daughter, the youngest junior, I mean, her youngest, she's part of the NIB program at Bryan High.
Y a través de los años como mamá he visto cómo han incorporado a las familias, no solo a las familias hispanas, a todas las familias, a los niños. Y se agradece el que cada día nos sintamos más bienvenidos en las escuelas, en los programas y en todas las actividades de los niños. Muchas gracias, que Dios los bendiga.
Over the last few years, she has seen how schools from everyone at the reception to teachers and staff have opened their doors and have a more welcoming attitude towards families. She said not only Hispanic families, not only Spanish-speaking families, all families. And she sincerely appreciates it and our pleasure.
Aww. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for that. We'll now move to our superintendent update. Thank you, Dr. Harland. There's a common misconception that during the summer, things slow down and that we even disappear. But I'm here to tell you, that's not the case. We're actually busier than ever during the summer because we're trying to close out the school year, a very successful one, and run all of our summer programs and ramp up for the next school year. And we're excited because great things continue to happen. On the first slide, you'll notice a couple of our students. We just wrapped up summer programs and summer school with a complete success. And you also may notice that Lane Boobin is holding a flag. And that is because on behalf of Congressman Pete Sessions, we had Jeff Mersky show up to award that flag to hang proudly in Bryan High School in recognition of one of our students from 2021. His name is Charles McLaughlin. And he is proudly continuing to represent Bryan ISD at the United States Naval Academy. So this flag will fly in his honor at Bryan High School. Once a Viking, forever a Viking. Speaking of a busy summer, here we are in the middle of July. And summer, you know, once you start seeing the school supplies out at Walmart and Target, you know summer vacation is over. So Bryan ISD is ready, willing, and able to welcome our families and our parents back. And with that, we have launched the Bryan ISD Hub. We have promoted this in the media, social media in particular. And it's a one-size-fits-all stop for parents to log into our website to learn about everything they need to know from pre-K through grade 12 with all the resources and information readily available. On Saturday night, many of us were fortunate enough to attend the 26th Annual Hispanic Forum Scholarship Gala. And we are so proud because so many of our students representing all of our high schools were the proud recipients and were among over $175,000 in scholarships. And not only were our students recognized, but our very own Becky Ryberg, the principal at Rayburn Elementary School, was recognized that night as the Educator of the Year. So it was just a great night in Bryan ISD, shining a light brightly on our mariachi students who performed and all of our scholarship winners. And we had families, parents, and students there alike. It was a great night for Bryan ISD. We're also very grateful because on July 2nd, in this photo, you see a 2024 Rutter graduate, Mr. Brandon Salazar. He was the recipient of the first-ever Brazos Valley Builders Care Scholarship from the Greater Brazos Valley Builders Association. This association believes in the importance of trade skills. And this is one of our CTE students that day receiving a $1,000 scholarship to help him in his post-secondary pursuit of trade school. Another celebration tonight, I'm proud to share that the Eagles Reader Choice Award has been bestowed upon Bowen Elementary. So you're going to see Bowen Elementary shouting this from the rooftop as the best K-12 school in the entire Brazos Valley. We're super excited about this award and are proud of Bowen Elementary in particular. Moving on, Mr. Naveen Kuna continues to represent us. Just last week, he was honored by the Texas State Board of Education, again, representing Bryan ISD as the State Secondary Teacher of the Year. He was up there talking to all of our State Board of Education leaders who develop curriculum and, as you know, set laws and standards for us. So he has a voice in their attention. And again, he's representing us ever so well. And then finally, we're proud to announce that Bryan ISD will again be offering free breakfast and lunch for every single student for the 2024-2025 school year. So we've blasted this out in social media so that parents understand that they can take a break from packing the brown bag lunch if they want because we're going to be ready to serve our students again at every single level. So in summary, great things are happening this summer. And I can't believe it, but school is right around the corner. And we're excited to welcome back all of our students very soon. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have a couple of standing committee updates. First, we'll hear from Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Joel Bryan.
Thank you. The Teaching and Learning Committee met on July 11 via Zoom. Board members present were Mrs. Benford, Mrs. Waller, myself. Staff was Mrs. Carabine and Dr. Ibarra. The topic discussed on this particular meeting was the academic planning for 24-25 school year. And we started the meeting with an overview of the Texas Education Agency's redesign of the STAR test and the accountability system, which began in 22-23 school year. So there were some changes to the STAR accountability ratings. I'll touch on a few of them. Overall, we discussed the methodology for the calculations and all the components that they take into consideration at a high level. There's a lot of detail there that I frankly don't quite understand. But at a high level, that's what we covered. And then we got into some of the changes that happened last year on our testing, the structure of the test, the question types. The last year, all grade levels were tested on computers, which was a new change for our students. The content, writing was included in every tested subject, including math, which was another unique change. Some of the other things were the indicators that comprise the assessment and the criteria and how they make those calculations, and then the cut points and scaling shifts. So following, or in the upcoming school year, the administration will be bringing the district and campus improvement plans for board consideration. And our staff is currently reviewing all student performance results and developing plans of action to support our students.
Thank you. And I believe we're going to hear more about the assessment redesign in just a bit. So thanks for sharing that. Next, we will hear from a member of our City Schools Committee, Mr. David Stasny will share an update from that committee.
The City School Joint Committee met on July 10. We had Ms. Benford, Ms. Waller, myself from the board, and Mr. Carabine and Mr. Beesaw from administration. Jared Salvato was the council member there. Hugh Walker and Joey Dunn were part of the staff. And there was another individual, I've forgotten his name. Do you remember from the guy that lives in Navasota? But he was...
Brad Stafford.
Okay, all right.
Parks in red.
Yeah, he was there as well and spoke. I can't really say enough about the meeting. It was just really great. Jared certainly may have been the only council member there, but then he kind of stole the show because he really wanted to talk about how we can work together, the city and the school district, to make sure the community knows what we're about and what we're accomplishing and all the opportunities we have. Because he's, he, like a lot of us, sometimes gets a little frustrated because it seems like, even though we try very hard to get the word out and we are doing a good job of that, he still feels like, and a lot of us agree, that we still aren't reaching everybody. And he wants to fix that as best that we can in a joint effort and was very excited about it. And we talked about that for quite a while. So stay tuned for that. I know that there's going to be, if it hadn't already happened, an attempt to get staff together from both the city and the, from the city and the school district to make it a joint effort with regard to publicity and sharing information to the public. We also talked a little bit about what's going on with Midtown Park. And they mentioned the Schulman Event Center, which is basically a theater and a bowling alley. And I think they're going to have an outdoor amphitheater. They also, I believe, mentioned the, I think they mentioned the playground at this meeting. It's going to be a really cool playground from what I understand. It's going to be something out of the ordinary that he's hoping. And well, I say he, the city's hoping. And that it will be something that people will say, I came here one time and I'm definitely coming back. It sounds like it's going to be pretty exciting. They're still working on their indoor tennis. They're going to have an indoor pickleball building. And so all that's continuing to go. I think they're working on a boardwalk around the lake. So lots going on with the city. We had, again, a very good meeting. We met first time in a while at City Hall and they graciously fed us. So it was, again, we're looking forward to our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stasny. All right, now we'll move to an information item. We're going to hear from Dr. Barbara Ibarra, our Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, to hear about assessment redesign and accountability refresh.
Thank you, Dr. Harland. So, good evening. We've been in the boardroom several times talking over the course of the past couple of years about some changes at the state level regarding assessment and accountability. And so it seems like a good time to refresh some of the information that we've shared previously and then to also answer any of your questions. Mr. Bryan did an excellent job explaining some of the changes that we were talking about over the past couple of years and then kind of foreshadowing what we'd be talking about this evening. So what I'd like to do is just first take you back in time, a little historical perspective. So when accountability system changes, we usually change the type of ratings we give. And we usually change the test in some way, shape, or form, the state does. And they change the name of it. Sometimes that doesn't happen, though. So if you're looking at the screen, we have accountability going back to the beginning of the current A through F system, which began in the 1718 school year. And when it was initially released, it replaced what we called the four index system. And essentially, it's a lot of the same data points that are utilized in the A through F system, but the methodology was obviously different to come up with a singular letter grade for school systems. But you can kind of see a pattern there where you have your baseline kind of starting point. Remember, some of these accountability indicators in the systems are lagging indicators, meaning they might have transpired two years ago, like graduation rate or college and career military readiness. Those things were locked in place. And so when you scale them two years later under a different methodology, you didn't know at the time what that was going to equate to or even how to really address it. So we began with a 75. And you can see, we moved up to a 79 in the subsequent year. And then COVID came into play where we did not have assessments. We did not continue with ratings at the state level. In the 21, 2021 school year, we did not receive a rating. They declared a state of disaster once again. However, the methodology was there and it had not changed. So had we been rated, it would have been approximately an 84. And then, of course, the 21-22 school year culminated with an 86 as a final year of what we're calling STAR 1.0, that version of the assessment, and the original A through F system. In the green rows, you'll see that is a new assessment, still called STAR, though, and a new accountability methodology and system, but still an A through F system. You probably remember back in the day when there was TOS, TECS, or TOS Tabs, right, Ruthie?
Yes.
TACS. There's been different renditions of state assessments because they are, in fact, necessary to help us understand how kids are learning and progressing. But generally, we change the name. So we're in a different place now where these green rows represent some pretty fundamental different approaches to assessment. But the name of this test has not changed, nor has the rating. Before, ratings have been exemplary or met standard or they give different types of explanations for it. Under the four index system was met standard or did not meet standard. They didn't really have a differentiation in terms of your performance. So at any rate, we're in the green rows in this day and age. And we're going to walk through what some of those changes were and why the green rows should not be compared to the blue rows on the table, so to speak, right? They're different things. In fact, that's from our Commissioner of Education as well. So we talked a little bit about what Mr. Bryan shared earlier, structure, content, indicators, cut points, and methodology. So under the 22-23 school year, this was not the current year, we just finished, but the year prior, that's when all of that began, where we started seeing a different assessment and a different methodology. So let's go break that down. Structure. When we talk about the structure of the assessment, I'm talking about the mechanical structure of what the student experience is in terms of a test question, right? 75% of the questions on the test and on STAR 2.0 could be derived from multiple choice. But the other 25% had to be some combination of technology-enhanced questions and/or written responses. So we call those short constructed responses. And so you're going to see that content changed across the board. And that no longer did we have a writing assessment in grades four and grade seven. Now it's integrated into every grade level and every subject. So the SA portion is still traditionally with the ELA portion of the assessment. But the short response questions are embedded in every grade, third, fourth, fifth, in every subject, math, science, social studies at eighth grade, all the different grades and subjects. All of these are good things. These are things that kids experience in classrooms. We write in every classroom. We have technology-enhanced interactive materials in every classroom. But it is a shift and is a different thing for a student to experience for the first time. And again, that was during the 22-23 school year. That was, in fact, required by the legislature during the 2019 session, 2019 session. Aside from STAR 2.0, there was also a change to the A through F accountability system, several changes, in fact, that involved indicators, cut points, and the methodology. Specifically for indicators, there were some new indicators, some good things to track. They were tracking how did students perform who'd previously been unsuccessful on a STAR assessment? Are they making progress now? And that moved into domain, or to domain two as a new indicator for us to review and measure. Cut points changed. So whatever used to, I'm going to take a 300-page document and try and do it in a couple sentences, okay? When they have an assessment and you get a grade for it, so to speak, and X percent of students met a standard, it scales over to another number, which is then plugged into the accountability system. They changed those scales and those transitions of what it means to get this. Now it's a different grade. For example, for college, career, and military readiness, previously, if you had a rate of 60% or 60 for your students hitting one of those measures, that would scale to a score of 90 in the accountability system, an A. Under the new A through F system, a district would need to get an 88 to get the same level of a 90 as an A. So a really different scaling and approach to what those numbers mean. So you should anticipate then it's likely going to have an impact on district and campus ratings. ratings correspondingly, and how it's shifted, right? Methodology. The biggest methodology change really was at the district level. There are other adjustments at the campus level, in particular with domain three, and how we look at closing gaps between different groups and populations of students. But by and large, one of the biggest fundamental changes was how the district rating was derived. It used to be the same as what a campus would be. Basically, a district was treated like a large campus. How many students got X, Y, or Z on this? And the same methodology was utilized, but just at the district level. Under the new A through F system, the green rose, right, we're still on the green rose, it changed into total population and by domain what that rating was. So, Bryan High School is our largest high school, and our largest school in the district, followed closely by Rutter High School. Bryan High School comprises 20.9% of the district rating. So, whatever the rating is for Bryan High School, that 20% of the district rating comes from Bryan High School. It doesn't have to do with the number of tests taken at that campus. There were more tests taken at other campuses because of the number of assessments that are required by the state at that particular level. It has to do with the population of students, what weight that campus's rating played in the district rating. That one change alone had a pretty significant impact on districts across the state of Texas. So, that's a different methodology, which is why I'm saying the blue rose and the green rose can't be compared, because they are different methodologies in many, many areas. So much so, that TEA had to release a statement, and you can see it there in red. It was on their training materials for ISDs and for region service centers, but it was also echoed by our Commissioner of Education and his address to Boards of Trustees in May of 2023. And essentially, it's that, under the new A through F system, it's possible for a school to improve over the prior system and still receive a lower letter grade in this accountability system, because it's not the same. It is entirely different in terms of what it's looking at, as well as the assessment. So, it's great for it to be out there, but you can see, and certainly I know the board understands, that it can cause some misunderstandings and misconceptions in terms of public view.
Barbara?
Ma'am. Certainly.
Talking about, for instance, just using Bryan High as an example.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as students pass the tests through their lifetime, and then you get to the high school level, and you don't have to take it because you passed it at a younger level. Okay, so, as you said, there's less kids at Bryan High or Rutter taking the test-
Correct.
-because those students have passed it.
Yes, it's true. They have a substitute, they do a substitute assessment now, there's another layer.
But many of the, so, the students that have not mastered the test are still taking it, and half of these kids, it's changed every two years for them, so now they're in high school.
It's a different version of the assessment for them, yes.
But the bigger schools count more, not associated with those facts-
Correct.
-but associated with the number of students-
Enrolled at the campus. Number of students enrolled at the campus. So, the high school assessments are English I, English II, Algebra, Biology, and US History. So, there's five assessments over your high school career that are required for graduation. For over your four years, a student takes five. As compared to eighth grade, there are four assessments that every eighth grader takes, and seventh grade, there is math, and now there is also ELAR, because it's all embedded in there. So, that school has more students taking more assessments, and it's at all grades at that school versus the high school. It's at ninth, 10th, and 11th, right? You have at least one at 11th grade. Likely, you've got English II at 10th grade typically. And then the freshman year, to your point, they might have taken some of those courses in their eighth grade year, and taken them at the eighth grade campus. If that's the case, then we have to sub out a comparable test, whether it be SAT or ACT for the same subject matter. We have to do, and administer a different test to count for their high school version of that test, even though they already have it.
And those-
Count.
Count in this-
Yes, ma'am.
Data?
They do.
Okay.
So, you could, there's a lot of complexities, and that's a great example, there are so many intricacies to it, but it is solely derived on the population enrolled at the campus, the number, the total number of students. Knowing all of this, this Board of Trustees took a leadership role across the state, and in fact, many other districts have followed suit at that time during 2223, and passed a resolution saying, "Okay, we understand there are changes, and we accept that there are always going to be changes, that's quite fine, but let's make sure that we've got time to understand and learn what those changes mean for students and for teachers, so that we properly implement them. Let's do a hold harmless here, let's administer the assessment, let's learn from it, let's learn how to better equip our students for what it means to do a technology-enhanced question where it's a drag-and-drop, or a hotspot, or an inline dropdown." What are all those different options for a kid, and how do they know intuitively what to do in that moment as a third grader? How do I type my response, or my short constructed response, as a third grader in my math class? So, all of those things, just better equipping the kids. So, the resolution was passed in April, and then, of course, the Commissioner of Education, that was about the same time in May, that he released, because many districts were concerned, that it was evident that district ratings were going to be different, and TEA put out a statement, the Commissioner in particular, I think we even played it in this boardroom that summer, where he said the same thing, that you may improve, but your rating will be probably about a grade lower, 10, eight to 12 points, somewhere in that range, just because of the changes that we've instituted in resetting the accountability system, and then, of course, the test is different as well. Again, this happens typically when there's a new accountability system. It absolutely is a standard practice, that it's going to be a different, it's a different, it's a different arrangement of indicators and information on the performance of public schools. So, it is expected and how we deal with it. Then, we moved into the past year, the 2324 school year that we just concluded. You'll recall in September, we had gone into the fall semester with some students, we finished probably in August, with, remember the Zone of Uncertainty? That was my favorite, that was fun. We didn't quite know, these kids were in the Zone of Uncertainty, TEA wasn't sure if that was a pass yet or not. They were in the Zone of Uncertainty. Likely to pass, probably not going to pass, and then the Zone of Uncertainty. Well, that got cleared up in August, but in September, TEA, when they were poised to release the accountability findings and results, postponed it because they had some issues with the growth data, and they didn't feel like it was ready for a full release there, and for good reason. They had built some of their metrics based on some data from the COVID years, which was an anomaly, and would trigger changes in the system. So, they did pause it, and as they were pausing it, on October 23rd, a temporary injunction was issued by a court, basically stating, "You didn't even release the accountability manual for the year, it's already over, just hold harmless for a year." So, that's still tied up in litigation, by the way. Ironically, right after that court injunction was released, the accountability manual for the prior school year was released on Halloween. So, again, it lagged. Ultimately, we still do not have ratings from the 2223 school year. We have an estimate of how we believe we did, but we don't really know, because it's never been released with certainty, what that calculation looks like, so we know if we're on track, or are we off track with it. But here's the good news. As we said last year at this time, as we're heading into completing the Zone of Uncertainty, what we do know is what the students were successful with on the assessment based on the standards, and where they struggled and need more support. And that's how we form our plans of action. How do I help the child? How do I make sure that I'm moving each kid forward as much as I possibly can in the time that I have with them? So, then we entered this school year, and we have all of those changes in play, they're still in motion, and we have a new change. This is where we started to see computerized grading on STAR assessments. We visited about this in April for a little bit, that because there are so many more opportunities for students to submit short constructed responses and extended constructed responses, essays, that there's a lot more grading that needs to be done. For that reason, TEA shifted to technology-based grading. And while that is controversial, there are safety nets in place, according to the state of Texas, that ensure its accuracy. But here's one thing we definitely know. The rubric, as you would expect, is vastly different than STAR 1.0. STAR 1.0 only had writing in grades four and seven, and it didn't have short constructed responses, they didn't exist. And so, all of the rubrics have shifted on what constitutes a quality writing response, and even what they're looking for. Now, they're looking for text-based evidence. You have to, as a student, explain how in the text, your opinion, your viewpoint is supported by what's in the text. That's a big shift for kids, and it was a big learning moment for them. We also found this year with the technology-enhanced grading, and with the rubric changes, that there are some things we need to learn from. For example, science. The short constructive responses in science are really dependent on getting the score, and you have to tie the academic vocabulary to it. Example, if the question was about the soil composition, and in your response, you talked about dirt, you wouldn't receive points. You didn't use the academic vocabulary of soil. And so, the rubrics are different than they've been, and obviously, we're still learning them after the second year, and unpacking all of that. But that's something we have to equip our students for, so that they have their best foot forward in those moments. The student understood the concept, but didn't utilize the academic vocabulary associated with what the question was really seeking. So, I'll pause there for a second.
I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead. What questions do you have? Go right ahead.
Third grade level, can't say dirt.
You know, the challenge for me is, it's not just enough for us to teach kids content. Now, we have to teach them how to take the test so they can demonstrate their knowledge of the content. That feels like we're penalizing children, and, I mean, I know now on social media, when I'm looking at comments on things, it'll give me an AI synopsis of what all the comments say. But that is not the same as human beings assessing what students are writing about. Either it was too much too soon, maybe we weren't prepared as a state to incorporate writing into every grade level, just feel like we're testing our poor kids to death. And anyone who looks at the new changes to the accountability system and says that the intent was not to make schools look worse, I think is misinformed.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I know the answer to this, but I just want to make it public.
Yes, ma'am.
So, at a third grade level, if the child said dirt, and the computer was looking for soil, they got a zero?
So, I don't know the specific grade level, but it was a science assessment, the curriculum team had a personal experience with one of their own children who did not receive the points. I can't tell you the specific grade level, but academic vocabulary is definitely a part of the rubric.
I just threw third grade out there because of the age of the child-
Yes.
-not knowing the difference of the two words for the same thing they go playing every day.
Yes.
Well, they have grasp, but-
Well, I mean, the ag person in me has a problem with using the word dirt, but that's something that we don't, you know, we can get one grace on that until high school. But, yeah, it just feels like semantics, and I gotcha, when that should not be the intended purpose.
It was likely fifth grade, if I had to wager. It was likely fifth grade. Science is assessed at fifth and eighth, and it was a younger child, so I believe it's probably fifth grade. So, that's the change for this year, okay? So, as we come back to here, here we are. We don't have ratings for the prior school year at this point, for 2223. We're anticipating the release of ratings in August, around mid-August, TEA will release those. But what we do know is what the Commissioner has told us, and that is to expect lower grades than the blue rose that you see before you. That that is to be expected under the new assessment and new accountability system. It was designed to have a lower rating, as in all likelihood, it would be lower for everybody.
But don't compare.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
They are different assessments and different accountability systems. But here's the good news. The work is still the work, and how we navigate it is still the right thing. Mr. Bryan mentioned it earlier, but it's those plans of actions, the district improvement plan, the campus improvement plans, targeted improvement plans, where we zero in on what's the biggest lever that we need to move on any individual campus to make the most positive impact for students academically in terms of achievement outcomes. Those are the things we need to be looking at in this moment, and those are the things we are looking at in this moment, so that we come around what the student needs to move as far forward as possible, so that they are successful. And that is the same game every year, regardless of the accountability system or the assessment, is teaching with the standards in mind, and making sure we're teaching to the level of rigor of those standards, so that the written, taught, and tested is all in alignment and in support of the kids' individual needs.
And I don't disagree with that.
Yes, ma'am.
But to push back a little bit, if I'm an educator, and I am working with these children, and I know what they know, and I get their test scores, and I see that they earned a zero on parts that I know they should have mastered-
It's frustrating.
-the level of frustration, not just for those individuals as teachers, but for then the parents, and then the child who's at the center of that. It just feels criminal that that's what we're doing in this state.
And I'm going to sound like a broken record here always, but we can't control what the state does. We can't control how they rig the A through F. We can't control how, what they use to do. The only thing that I think we have in our control are those data points that we collect, whether it's MAP, whether it's benchmarks, however we can compare to, those are elements, and I think one of the challenges that, there's two challenges that I have. One is, we hear about a lot of gung-ho stuff right at the beginning of the school year, here's all of our plans that we're going to do, and then we don't hear anything else about it until we get down to the, here's the final test scores that out, and it's like, I don't think this was the gung-ho place that we were expecting to be nine months previously. So, part of that, and part of that can be answered, well, state assessment got all wonky, they created new metrics, they use AI to grade, all these different things. Okay, do the MAP scores support that we're still on the same trajectory, that we're still on the same track that we were? And I'm scared to ask that question sometimes.
They are on track.
And, okay.
They are stable.
And so, maybe we need to make sure that we're seeing some of those-
It's a very good point.
-some of those elements. And the reason why I was worried about asking that question is because of validity, especially in the secondary schools, it, MAP is fairly new, and it seems like there was a little bit of hesitation in accepting of that within the secondary schools. So, you know, to me, that, as a former teacher, and, you know, if I were talking to teachers, you know, that's your balance, that's your, that's what we control, right? That's what we're looking at. And at that point in time, if we can tell that story, you know, everything that we have internally, that we're measuring and tracking, is showing progress, continued progress, and continued adoption of the curriculum and instruction. We can map the individual students' needs and show their individual growth, and we can show how the campuses are improving. I'm, you know, that's a much better story than probably anything that's ever going to come out of the state.
MAP achievement and MAP growth as a district is almost identical to the year prior, there was no shift. It was stable across the board, and it maintained. It's a very good point.
And, you know, I didn't always realize how important MAP data was until I traveled to Missouri and heard my nephew and his mom talking about how he did on his MAP test. So, when we talk about things that are more, you know, studied and global, that's not just in Texas, it's nationwide, and it's benchmarked over many, many years, so it is a stable point. And that's why we invested in doing that.
And MAP even takes a step further for the state of Texas, and restricts the questions in our statewide database for the MAP administration to those that represent Texas standards, so that it's unique to Texas. That filter's already applied for all Texas schools.
Awesome. Thanks for that reminder, Mark.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Where does, where does the MAP content come from for those tests? Is that, how are those tests formed?
Sure. So, NWEA is the company that produces the MAP assessment. It is a nationally-normed assessment. They have their own internal protocol and system for creating and designing those questions based on standards. They have their, each state has unique standards, or there's other states who have adopted Common Core, Texas is not one of those, we have unique standards. And so, they look at our Texas standards, and they match up with their test banks, what is a good and clean match with our standards, and they design that bank to go with it. that bank to go with it. And then the computer test itself is adaptive based on how the student responds to questions. So it's trying to ascertain what grade and what level of proficiency are you truly performing at based on our state standards. It might be that I'm a third grader taking the assessment, but I'm really, I really love reading. I always have. I always had a natural aptitude for it. And I might be testing at a fourth grader level for reading. So it tells the teacher, I'm ready to learn this next. But maybe for mathematics, I'm not ready to learn fourth grader material at all. I'm at this level, and I'm ready to learn this part of mathematics next based on our state standards. So it even goes in and brings in for each kid, what standard are they confident in? Where do we need to shore up support for that child? And what's the next step? Always keeping in mind the scope and sequence of the curriculum to keep everybody in alignment across the district. So as kids move from one school to another or one classroom to another, there's consistency with what's being taught, but so that that individualized plan for the student is always present and relevant based on the MAP performance. But to answer your question, it is a large database that's nationwide. I don't know how they do their test development, but it is, they have to have so many testers, back to Dr. Harland's point, before they can give a national norm for that particular grade for what they call a RIT score. And then they also won't calculate if you MET growth until they have enough testers. That was one of the problems with the secondary initially, that some of the tests hadn't been given enough times in Texas to be normed for Texas. We finally got there with biology just a couple of years ago. Did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
I'd say they're very cautious.
Yes.
About assigning grades and levels and MET or unmet until they have full robust data.
Yes, very much so.
And a lot, I know for those listening, they may not have even understood that we're saying MAP, M-A-P, measure?
Measures of academic progress.
Measure of academic progress.
For the Northwest Education Association.
Right. And that is a nationwide test. It seems, you know, but when realty companies, when greater schools, when people want to know about a district, they don't want to know MAP scores. They want to know how you did on the STAR. They want to know your A through F rating.
Because that's what's out there, right? So what I've always been an advocate for, because you do have districts across Texas that do their own rating, right? I mean, you can exempt yourself out of state rating and do your own rating. But you have to have certain pieces in place like MAP. And so, you know, they're using MAP to generate their rating score. I'm not advocating that we go that far.
Sure.
But at the same time, there's nothing to say that we can't generate.
Reporting.
Reporting based on our MAP scores. And again, I think one of the, one of the important points that kind of came through there, if people are listening, you know, these aren't based on Common Core. They're based on Texas standards. They're based on the same Texas standards that the A through F, you know, the testing is supposed to be based on. And so, and as far as the standards and national, I wasn't even going that far. I know there were tips and tricks that students would play to, you know, in secondary schools especially, that raised concern of the validity of their scores, right, which also kind of raised up into the others. But, you know, I, again, yes, what media and everything focuses on is what's there, what's put out. And, you know, I do think there's an opportunity there to change that narrative. It won't change overnight, but I think there is an opportunity, especially if, you know, if we continue down this road of we're not getting any rating, we're not getting any rating, we're not getting any rating, or meaningful rating. Here, we need to start thinking about how do we put out what, how are we making changes for next year? Because it's not off this rating that we don't have, right? So, you know, but we do have information that we're using, you know.
To inform that decision-making, those plans of action.
So, I, I'll be quiet now.
Well, many thanks to our educators for keeping us informed on all of these changes. And I think it's important for all of us to be informed and understand that when we see a headline, what does that mean in actual?
The blue rose cannot be compared to the green rose. They're different. Thank you, Dr. Harland. Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move to citizen comments. Citizens may make comments about topics relevant to district business. Topics should be limited to three minutes, and comments concerning specific students or personnel will be heard in closed session. We do have one public comment tonight. So we welcome Ms. Bobby Payton to the podium. And let me get a timer up.
I was like, there's a timer? Okay.
Yes, I will. I'll just tell you.
But I'll be honest, my message changed after reading all that. And, I mean, I still want to say thank you. Hi, my name is Bobby Payton. For those of you that don't know me, I used to work here. And I say this, and it sounds crazy, because what I'm about to say, this is pertinent to it. If you want to open up your phone and your browser and type in F A B I P A Y T O N and hit search, you will see about a Bryan ISD teacher. And I was listening to that, and I was like, ooh, that's why I quit, y'all. I didn't quit because of y'all. And Dr. Harland, you're right. I would say frustrating isn't the word. I thought it's demoralizing. And I heard you when you said that, like, we can't change it. But I was blessed with people, some of who are in this room, who when I told them I can't change it, and they said, Bobby, but you can change your focus. We'll take care of that. And I had lunch today with Leo, and there was a lot that he didn't know about my teacher life. And that's sad, because y'all are fighting for teachers like me, and a lot of y'all don't know a lot of the things, because a lot of the things happened because many people in this room broke protocols to protect me, to love me. Ms. Carabine once said that a diamond is made under pressure. Well, a lot of times, I was buried under a mountain of coal, and somebody in this room came and plucked me out and rescued me. And I probably need to document it. I'll probably make a video or something so that all of it comes out, and so y'all understand the impact that you sitting on the board can have on getting teachers like me and keeping teachers like me. Per the state of Texas, I was a mediocre teacher, y'all. I mean, I still, I still can't own all the great things people say about me. But the state of Texas would consider me a mediocre teacher, and in my first year of teaching, my evaluations reached fives. That's unheard of when you're a first-year teacher. It's like, you just want to get a three, and that's it. And by the time I left, I had way more fives than I had threes. And you think, why would you leave? Because when you go to college, you learn the righteous thing to do by kids. And when somebody tells you that you have to weigh between the right and the righteous thing, and you have a conscience, you just cannot. And I didn't tell anybody I was leaving because I couldn't look at you in the face, knowing everything you poured in to me to be the brave girl that I became that changed a lot of places in the world and tell you that I had to let go so I could do more because it was conflicting with my ethics and my integrity, things that you could not control. But in that time, you controlled so much, and you allowed me to do so many amazing things before many of you had the roles you have now. I did things in this district that are unheard of. I remember every day coming home and being like, how was your day? I didn't make it on the news today. I was worried because teachers made it on the news for bad reasons, right? And I remember when Matt LeBlanc came to my classroom, and all the kids had phones on their desk, and I was terrified that I was going to get fired because that was against district protocol. But all my kids had their phones out for an AI app that I had figured out would put a video in every anchor chart, and I multiplied myself by 100, and they could relearn everything that I had taught at their fingers and clay. You did that story. Y'all put me out there first, and every time I was going against the grain and I risked getting in trouble, somebody in this room came and told me to be brave.
Thank you, Bobby.
Take that into school year, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for being here tonight. All right. We will move on to our items for discussion and our action. Our consent agenda is first. If there's any concerns about any of the items on the consent agenda, any member may remove them, and we will discuss it. But if there are no concerns, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move approval of all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Benford and seconded by Mr. McCall. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Then to our regular agenda, we will start with business services, discuss and consider approval of school unit interlocal agreement between Bryan ISD and the city of Bryan pertaining to the provisions of school resource officers. We're going to hear from, and now I have your title, Executive Director of Maintenance and Operations, Ron Clary, and our Director of Safety and Security, Rich Himmel. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. This is the annual renewal of our interlocal agreement with the city of Bryan to provide our school resource officers. And this year, there is, there's no change to the agreement. We're still going to have 10 police officers working as school resources, officers supervised by a sergeant. The only change this year is an increase in the cost of less than 1%. And that is what we have before us.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the resolution authorizing the district to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Bryan pertaining to the provision of school resource officers.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Mr. Bryan and seconded by Ms. Benford. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to school leadership. Consider approval of the student code of conduct for the 2024-2025 school year. We are going to hear from Brian Merrill, Dr. Brian Merrill, our executive director of school leadership.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am. The code of conduct, it's a non-legislative year, and just to remind everybody, typically when there's a legislative session, we get all the changes in the world. And so this year, we don't have very many changes. In fact, we aligned ourselves, typically we do this anyway, but with the TASB model handbook. And so any of the recommendations that you see in there were recommended from them, and we didn't really add to it.
Say nothing crazy.
Nothing crazy. No, sir. Very, very, very few changes.
That's always a good thing, Dr. Merrill.
It is.
There was a lot of mostly rewording on special ed or what?
Yes, sir. It was very hard for me to figure out exactly what changed because obviously
we basically took a whole bunch out, put a whole bunch of new in instead of, you know, small changes. Can you maybe summarize that very briefly?
I cannot, unfortunately. Ms. Warren is not here. So I apologize for not being able to do that, but there were recommendations, again, from the model handbook.
And to your knowledge, at least, there wasn't anything.
No, sir. Nothing. No.
I'll bail him out. May I move approval of the student code of conduct for the 2024-2025 school year as presented?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Waller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. All right. Motion is approved.
We are happy to do a follow-up with the changes to just draw attention to the differences. It was mainly semantics, nothing as far as content, as far as significant changes.
And I will say, there are districts that fight over codes of, student codes of conduct. I know one district, I'm not sure they got it done last year. So grateful for us, you know, working together with our administration to have this done before the school year starts. So thank you. All right. The board will now convene in closed session to discuss the following items as allowed by Texas Government Code, Chapter 551.074, .0821, and .089. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. The time is now 7:02 PM. Board reconvened in open session at 7:53 PM. No action was taken in closed session. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.
Y'all have a good evening.